Six o'clock. All right, six o'clock, I will call the meeting to order. Uh, the meeting is being recorded. If somebody in the audience is recording, please let us know. Uh, we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. Flags to my left and your right. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag. United States of America. And to the republic where it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and we're gonna start by immediately going off agenda because uh, we're waiting on some people still to show up, I think here. So uh, we'll move to number two, which is a vote to approve the minutes of the April twenty twenty-two open session meeting. Uh, have all attendees had a chance to read it?
Yes.
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 And any objections or corrections to it?
No.
Okay. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes as ready.
Sound.
And I'm the second, I guess. And I'll second it. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You have abstained.
Yep, two abstains.
Yes, it's two.
I was at the last one.
Oh, you were?
Yeah.
Who was it?
Oh, you weren't, I thought you weren't, sorry, okay.
Yeah.
All those opposed? And we have two abstains, sorry.
Two zero two.
Uh, next up, we have the warrants, and that's gonna be.
Uh, reporting into the public record that Mrs. Cohen reviewed and approved the following school expense and payroll warrants. School expense warrant, April twenty thousand twenty-two. Three hundred and twenty-two thousand four seventy-six forty-two. School payroll warrant for people seven, one million ninety-six, nine twenty-three sixty-four. Adding these into the public record.
Thank you very much. Uh, next up, we're gonna go to our student representative updates and recognition.
I can do it from right there. You know, it's interesting, these two have not been.
They just want to stand on the table, don't they?
Yes, these people have been used today. These two guys have not been at an actual live meeting as to progress. So welcome. We'll see you later.
So um, the JCS, they started with their first annual sea turtle day, which uh, honors their new like school mascot. And they raised enough money for fundraiser, uh, fundraiser to help fund and adopt nineteen sea turtles. Um, they will, you know, sponsor and take care of their mascot. They're getting ready for the century memorial day concert, uh, which. They also just started their first official field day tradition, which they've called the JCS adventure games. So they have a ton of like challenges, like no wipeout style stuff, which is fun. Um, and then lastly, they have JCS walking through soon to um, their tour of Norton as they.
Uh, I'm going on that tour, but I didn't go to the JCS, so it's sad. Um, so, I know. For the LGN, they talked about what they're doing for the whole end of the year. Um, just kind of little overview, so they're having this classic book fair this week. And then next week is kids science day, which uh, I'm going to, or you and Simon?
Yeah.
So then Malia will go to a following, a later date. Uh, but on Tuesday, May seventeenth, a bunch of the signs on our side, you can't will be going and doing experiments with all the different kids and just kind of anything that we want to show them, but just a small like five-minute experiment. That should be really fun. Uh, and then there are a bunch of field days for um, kindergarten, first, second, and third grade. And then field trips for first grade and third grade. And then the second grade, the middle grade concert is now being held outside, so they're excited for that with the nice weather. And third grade, they're going to visit the Yale School to help with transition in September, Norton in September. And then Norton Games Day, they're gonna take over for respects for all of this. Fun activities for them.
Um, so for the yellow, they're planning to help the health of those graders and with their fourth grade, they're pretty transitions. They're planning activities for the fourth graders who are celebrating moving up to fifth grade. Um, and then the uh, Yale PTO is organizing the fifth grader send-off, which is their little graduation. And I don't know what this means, but it says, Mr. Gigan and Mr. Malawa owe the students the kissing of an animal of their choice for meeting their Easter thon. And I can't wait to see the video of that this year. I'll take a.
Wow, I believe even a couple of years ago, it was a pig.
Yeah, I think it's completely been, it's completely been a bear, so.
So I believe it is, they meet their goals for the fun run at Mr. Malaw or Mr. Gigan.
I'd pick some. I feel like kiss a whale. Let's see that.
Are we bringing in the whale?
I know, I would think that we're exactly where you'd find one.
That's, that's all.
Uh, so for the middle school, they're gonna have their first in-person band and chorus concert on the seventeenth in the auditorium. So that should be good. And then they will have a day of aw- awesomeness courtesy of the Power of Purpose fundraising. So the day is going to have large inflatables, oversized lawn games, cash giveaways, music, and dancing. It kind of sounds like our April awesomeness dance that we used to have. Um, and then our middle school production of Legally Blonde will be taking place June ninth and tenth. Tickets go on sale this weekend, so everyone go to Legally Blonde. And then they're super excited because the traditional eighth grade dinner dance will be taking place again. And it's the longstanding tradition for the middle school. We have that said. Start in the middle, I guess. Um, all right, well, ninth grade had an ice cream social today because they had a success in the parent advisory board fundraiser. And then we already talked about science on society, they're going to the elementary schools. Um, music students are off to the Great East Music Festival. And then I think they also have a um, field trip tomorrow to Six Flags. Yeah, and then seniors will have a field trip on to Six Flags. So that should be fun, and it's kind of like a little bring back to seventh grade when our last went to Six Flags, so. Um, that should be good. And then senior spirit week kicks off on Monday and with different themes. Uh, everyone's super excited for everything but backpack day. So for those of you who don't know, kids bring in basically anything but backpack, backpack, it's all over TikTok now. And so they'll bring in like kayak and put their school stuff there. Like, it's so random, they'll bring in microwaves and stuff, some pencils in it, it's, it's really random.
Have a kid like follow them around and hold their stuff for them.
Yeah. Yeah, I know. We'll see what limits these kids will go to, but yeah. Definitely have some pictures of those. Um, but yeah, that, that'll be good. And then we have the barbecue on the twenty-third, I think. So that's for future day to see what, where everyone's going after high school. And then Department of Transportation will have, will be on the site for the week of May twenty-third. We're taking over nineteen high school students. So that should be good. And then year class has spirit week.
Yeah, we have our um, we're seniors spirit week after the official seniors leave, uh, take their place. Uh, and we also have for RoCap, which is the history honor society, we're doing uh, elementary like historical tours around Norton. Showing them the different um, things in Norton, explaining the history and stuff, so that's coming up pretty soon. I think that's our routine, so. I think that's pretty much it for.
Do you have any like spirit week days?
We do, I just got off the list. Um. We have on Mondays, we have USA day, on Tuesday, we have camo day. Wednesday, we have Wild West, Thursday, we have tie dye, and Friday, we have jersey day. And we get an ice cream party.
What's the last week for seniors, like with all the activities?
Next week.
So that's next week?
Yeah.
So there's scholarship, I know that.
Uh, scholarship, that's graduation. Thirty-first, yeah. We'll send out a calendar. Yeah, it's, it's uh, I'll make sure that the S, it's a calendar of events with the senior stuff. Set that up.
Super nice to hear about these in person.
Yeah. So uh, when, when I talk about, it's a good day, I mean, we know you went.
What happened to that?
Oh, I, I mean, as far as you know, we don't know what happened.
You don't know what happened?
Apparently it wasn't sunscreen day.
And thoughtful themes.
They're getting ready for that spirit day.
So, so tonight is Zoe's uh, more than likely your last meeting because uh, her year ends right around here. So we want to recognize Zoe for her wonderful leadership. Along with her colleague, of course, we'll recognize her senior year. For a wonderful, uh, being a wonderful student leader. Besides being a fantastic young woman, uh, I've gotten to know her a little bit, not only because of hair, but she's on the bridesmaid committee as well for me. Um, so this is just a little bit, small little token, something for you to remember us with, uh, after you're gone. And uh, thank you for leading, for being a model student. And uh, good luck next year.
Thank you, yeah, that's great, I love gentlemen.
And Zoe. When we were a surprise, patron of the school.
It's a, it's a very, um, well, it's, it's kind of a new way that we're doing things in Europe. So. When you um, are driving a car or something, you'll maybe think of NPS.
Thank you.
What's it say?
School committee rep, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two, and thank you.
So a little something.
That's mushy. No, that is not mushy. Herman, I think it's a long time mushy, it says six thirty.
I gotta say, you all serve this, uh, thank you guys very, very much. Uh, the, the way that you guys conducted this was, it was different. And, and we liked that right away, and I think we've kind of encouraged that. We got a little bit more of a sense of what people were thinking in the schools with some polls, et cetera, and that was great. It was like a regression change from kind of what we had and done, or anything kind of stale. Um, so thank you very much for that, thank you for talking.
So Malia will stay on.
You have great luck, good luck to you, and Malia will stay next year.
Yeah, Malia will stay on, and uh, Donald will be informed by me to select a uh, member of the uh, junior class uh, to join, entering juniors or current sophomore, to join Malia. And we'll have that person on board, uh, maybe by June, but definitely by the fall. Okay? Cool, thank you.
Awesome, all right, so next up, we're gonna go back to the first number of the, of the agenda. Um, something that is uh, somewhat special to make, it's the recognition of the Norton High School gymnastics team. Are we gonna have them all?
Yeah, we're gonna have them come on up. Coaches, please, as well. I'll do it from here, so that way you guys are the ones that are on the screen. So tonight, we're here, um, thanking Mr. Chairman through your work as a, as a parent, uh, as well. Um, to recognize uh, the Norton High School gymnastics team. And we want to provide first a team uh, recognition for all of your achievements during the twenty-one, twenty-two winter gymnastics season. As a small, very certificate for us that you guys hopefully can put up a gem or are here in school. So I'll give this to your coaches and your captains if they're here. Coaches, 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 come on, coach. It's not, I don't, I don't bite, I promise. So thank you so much. And we do also have um, four recognitions because of awards that were provided or, or recognitions. We have Carolyn LaSalle for excellence during the twenty-one, twenty-two winter gymnastics season for, for being recognized as well as Emma Isalehan?
Yes.
Thank you, I'm working on these names, guys, I promise. Um, for excellence as well, we have Liz Leanne, you guys are related. Just kidding. Uh, or Elizabeth, also for being recognized and um, with Zoe, and Zoe Duran also for excellence during the season. So I have certificates for the four of you here, and we'll, we'll talk a little bit about them in a second. And I believe that the chair has another recognition that maybe you want to bring up?
Thank you. Okay. So before I um, go into that, and I, I know some. But just, just, so the gymnastics team is actually um, it's, it's really special to me. I don't know if any of you know this, Zoe Durant, Zoe Avedeja, you probably don't, but um, but back in twenty sixteen, I, I reached out to Ted Currie, who's before Aaron's time, and asked him about forming a gymnastics team. So we didn't have a gymnastics team not that long. And I actually said, you know, I, I'd like to get a gymnastics team started, I think there's interest. I knew there was interest because uh, my, my friend on the street's daughter wanted to, to start it. And I not coincidentally had a little, at that time, seven or eight-year-old who was into gymnastics as well. And you probably know. So I, I have a little bit of a unique perspective for this because I, I go to her practices and she goes to the club team and why do you guys go? So I have gotten a chance over the years to see you guys work, I've seen practice. I've seen you guys when you are frustrated and struggling to get a skill, and I've seen you guys when you have gotten a skill and the joy you have. And more importantly, I've seen the support that your teammates give you when you struggle. And to share joy when you actually get a skill, new skill. So um, I think it's kind of um, it's kind of a different sport, really. There are a couple of sports like gymnastics, but gymnastics is one of those sports where you're on your own. And the team effort is really their support for you when you're out on the floor and being involved on the bars, whatever it may be. So and, and you see that, because I've been to some of these meets, and I've seen you guys cheer each other on a little less. And it's, it's really touching to see. And honestly, I, I, I'm super proud of you guys for the undefeated season. That is, it's something that you will, you will hold in your hearts forever, but I'm more proud of you guys for the teammates you are to each other. I think that means the absolute world, you guys are, are the definition of teammates. It was really impressive to see, and I, I'll tell you, the, the last meet that you guys had when you finished the undefeated season, I honestly think I was in depth, that was this, I was actually getting more excited than you guys were. When I got out to score, I cheered way louder than you guys did, you guys were like, yeah, and I was like. So Aaron will, will tell you, for the last like two years, I've been telling him, I'm like, listen, this team is gonna be really good. Like, I'm telling you, it's coming, because I saw it coming up, I saw the people coming through the ranks, and I knew that it was just a matter of time before you guys, you know, got to where you are today. So congratulations to you guys, love the hard work, love the, the teamsmanship. Um, and I think the, the thing that you were referring to was, was this right here, which I know to this point, I feel like you guys have been kind of the ignored sport of Norton, quite frankly. Um, but no more, we, we finally got you what you're.
Yeah, good.
We finally got you what you serve, and that's a little recognition that, well, I've not seen this, by the way, so hopefully it was a say, uh.
Yeah, so hopefully it's not wrong if it is a state, these folks. So as you know, we put up uh, banners here in uh, in Norton for all of our stuff. But um. This is what, this will go in gym, and I.
Gymnastics team.
I've been doing this, uh, one of you guys, two of you guys holding up over there, so we can take a picture of you. Go ahead, don't be shy. So as you guys are doing that, I'll read the formal stuff. Undefeated regular season, eight and O, one TVL championship, TVL coach of the year. Entered postseason with a state rank of number seven, seventh place team in the self-sections. Notable achievements, Liz Lehan, TVL, TVL All-Star. At TVL champs with second uneven bars and third place all around. Qualified to state and New England individual championship on uneven bars or exercise. Entered the individual state championships as the number one seed on the uneven bars. Karen LaSalle, TVL All-Star, TVL vaulting champion. Qualified to state individual champions on the vault as number four seat. Emily Anne, TV, TVL All-Star. At TVL champs, third place on floor exercise, qualified to the state New England championships as an all-around. Sorry, interpreter's gonna kill me. Set school record and name to the prestigious state nine-point-five list by scoring a nine-point-five or better six times. And Zoe Duran, TVL All-Star. At TVL champs with second place uneven bars, third place balance beam, and second place all around. Qualified to state and New England individual championships as an all-around. Place third out of ninety-three competitors on uneven bars at the New England championships. Chosen to represent Team Massachusetts at the senior national championships in Fort Myers, Florida. Uh, and winning, their season highlight was winning the meet against VR West Bridgewater, who had not lost in regular season meetings in seven years. Joe's proud of you, uh, I, I think, uh, Mrs. Sebastian, you say the best.
Yeah, two things before we, before we let you go, saying no, again, you guys want to get back to markets. Um, I, I believe that we're getting a second banner that will go into your home gym at Walberries. And Joe just reminded me, I would be remiss if I, if I did not recognize Deb and I believe the coaches, who did a fantastic job. They, they, and, and as the seniors know, and Zoe Avedeja, you've been there, you know as well, the wins were not frequent for a lot of you. And they just kept grinding, sticking to it, sticking to it, and you know, it's not just your talent, but it's their hard work too as well, it comes here, so thank you. Couldn't, couldn't appreciate you guys.
And if I know the uh, schedule for practices and everything else, uh, thank you to the parents also, driving back and forth at weird hours. I know because I'd be talking to Mr. Sebastian, drop off some picks up, pickups and all that stuff. I know it's one of those sports where not every place is available to you twenty-four, seven, or that, so. I know it takes up some time for the families to do all that and run around, so thank you to the parents as well. Congrats, finish your year strong. And uh, listen, nobody's ever repeated, you did it the first time, now we gotta repeat.
Yeah, no pressure. Can't wait to catch one of you guys at a gymnastics meet when I'm not busy with the other sports, because you did a good job in. Number one fan, can't wait to make a gymnastics meet one day.
Thank you, Tina.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, that's ours. My wife, my wife is screaming at me. No, not really.
My apologies to our interpreters and uh, all around for my wicked fast reading. I am sorry, I need to do better, my fault.
All right, um, much appreciated that we could do that. So next up, we have the second reading and the vote to approve the non-discrimination policies. And before we go into that, if you're uncomfortable with this, you have no chance to read through it. You can certainly ask questions right now.
Uh, yeah, I've read through it, I'm probably abstaining, you know, so it'll just be done.
Well, if, if you're not comfortable voting, I'm okay to hold the saw too, because we're actually sure he's missing as well.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's. All right, do, do you have any questions on it? I'm gonna ask them at the moment. Okay.
So we're gonna table.
Yeah, we'll, we'll table this until, until the next meeting.
Okay. That was the table.
I thought you were cheering for me, oh, sorry. I don't get cheered up. Uh, next up, we have FY twenty-three budget update.
Uh, so just want to give you some general big picture, uh, not getting into specific line items uh, tonight because we still don't have a formal vote on FinCon, town manager, and then um, and uh, town meeting. Town meeting is a little later this year, so that's a little problematic for the school department, because we know we have a fifteen cutoff date by state statute. But if we get all the business done on the seventh, then I'll be able to make the decision. At this time, I am announcing that I am not making direct teaching cuts to the classroom. Subject to change, right? Because if the numbers change to the more negative, then I've gotta get into this. We will be hitting um, what I would call uh, essential staff, but not, not staff that is gonna uh, make a classroom size go up to twenty-seven or something.
Classroom staff, or support staff.
Right, exactly. The second part is, we're zeroing out a number of line items um, around expenses. Um, a couple of them that we really need, but we're gonna just have to figure out another way. Um, this includes a, some line items that are uh, somewhat concerning around contract services, but we're, we're just gonna say no and, and move from it, and then wait to see if the summers, things alleviate for us to be able to say yes. Right now, it is a recommended two percent increase. So that doesn't even cover our, that does not cover our mandates, okay? So what we're trying to do is two things. We're kicking the can down the road another year with five hundred thousand, and that's a three funds that, as you all know, we did not want to use this year because we don't want it to be recurring, it's gonna be recurring. Therefore, taking the recurring balance to around two-point-eight million dollars for the start of FY twenty-four. That's a big nugget that we need to talk about. But nobody wants to talk about twenty-four yet, we're talking about twenty-three. The um, the.
We're gonna be limping through twenty-three.
So, right, so what this does is, if you take.
Question on the twenty, the two-point-eight also include, the twenty-eight is the, the uh, assumed deficit?
It's two-point-three with another half. Yeah.
And, but this is some deficit we're looking at in twenty twenty-four. Does that include the fact that we're not carried over the school choice?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that we've remembered to.
Right, so, so when you look at this, if you take the five hundred, you need nine hundred thousand and cut, it's like nine hundred and fifteen thousand. I'm just saying nine hundred thousand now, that means I gotta find four. So that's what we did, we found four by not hitting the classrooms, cutting a ton of line items. Contract services, I don't even know how we're gonna be creative and work around them, but we'll figure out a way not to touch the classroom. Um, and meet all of our contractual requirements for personnel and so on and so forth. Um, but we are going to have to have a discussion about default town meeting. There's no doubt about it, because this is one, this, this means your revolving accounts and your budgets are at zero line items, which means people leave us, we might have some savings, we might see some of that, but on the other side of it, um, the big negative is one, out of district placement, and we're in the whole six figures. So keep that in mind as we move forward. My concern with this budget is uh, coming out of uh, COVID and the continuation of uh, trying to target students uh, not only getting to grade level, uh, because of, they, they responded negatively, let's say, all the work that uh, Dr. O'Neill's office with all of our interventions doing is working, we see data that it is working. Uh, but we still have some more work to do. Some of that is not gonna be available. So I can see what's gonna happen and project what's gonna happen, which is what happened um, literally when I first got here, which was this idea that if we don't prevent, then you pay it on the other side, but you will pay. It's, 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 it's like taxes and dying, it's gonna happen. Um, so uh, that's the concerning part uh, about this. Um, and so we, we will continue to work on this, I don't want to scare my staff, I don't want to scare parents, I don't want to scare the school committee. But we have some real unrealistic things that we, we need to really take a look at. We're gonna continue to massage the budget um, as much as we can, but uh, we could be potentially going back, not only in the fall, but month after month after month of FinCon saying, what do you want us to do? If we have a placement that comes from another state that we've had in the past or a situation. Right now, the budget uh, from the state doesn't look like it's gonna grow any further. You are one, or we are one of a hundred and thirty-eight districts in the Commonwealth. That's SOA money, or Student Opportunity Act, is at, set at currently sixty dollars per student. Um, we may have uh, some flexibility with the charter reimbursement, it's going up. And as you know, we have about a hundred students give or take between all the charter schools, sixty-nine of them at the local charter schools. So that, if that reimbursement rate goes up, that's more money into the coffers, there's an argument we could make there. Um, uh, Mr. Unitz is still trying to balance the budget right now, he was still short over two hundred thousand dollars last time I spoke. But he'd asked the FinCon and the selectmen not to cut further to try to figure out other ways to, to do it. So that's where we're at, that's the negative Nelly of the budget right now. Um, and we will know some more in a few weeks, when the final votes are taken. Then the June seventh town meeting, where I, I got a feeling there's gonna be some debate about budgets. And then um, and then in between there notifying uh, staff. If they are non-union staff, I will notify probably before town meeting. I think I, if they're non-union staff, um, then I, I, I should give these people the opportunity to get another job if they can, sooner. So that would be my, my goal. Right now, I do not have uh, union positions of any type within the cuts currently. Okay? So that's the negative Nelly about the budget.
All right.
Everything else is great.
From celebrations to funeral.
Just for a point of reference, I guess, in terms of the budget, obviously, the school committee has approved FY twenty-three. You guys kind of handle working it with the town, does it ever come back this way or no?
Yeah, so it's gonna come back to you after town meeting, for, for your final vote of implementation. So once town meeting is over, so let's, for, for our given sake only, I don't want to scare anybody in another department. Let's say the school committee finds that there's a potential fifty thousand dollars somewhere, and wants to amend its budget on town meeting before, it can do that. Now typically, we try to go to town meeting before with a lot of cohesion and everybody's happy, even though everybody's sad. So.
We do.
Yes, so um, but they're, they're, the, the way I see it right now is that, unless I hear something that, you know, I can push mic on um, and, and the FinCon, and I am going to FinCon Monday night. I'm sure they're gonna want to hear some more specifics to this, I'm not getting into specifics until I really need to, which is typically um, between now and town meeting, and then definitely after the town meeting. First meeting after town meeting, Nick, the committee votes, devotes its final budget, giving me authority to begin the implementation. First meeting after town meeting, Nick, the committee votes, devotes its final budget, giving me authority to begin the implementation of that budget for July first. So that's where we can have some more discussions with FDP. Um, and sometimes the the committee will ask questions beforehand of what if we cut this and not this and that type of stuff. You'll also have discussion on fees at that time, sports fees and transportation fees and and uh preschool fees would all be back for discussion as well at that time, at least on the table. It may be that the committee decides not to act on it, which is fine.
Which we didn't.
Which we have not. We've actually gone the other way. We've frozen preschool because of COVID and said felt like charging you more with less services was not a good idea, which I would agree. And eight into that six figure number. And then and that's what people have to remind themselves is that we we've had to zero out revolving accounts and so forth to take care of those bills so we don't go back to town meeting asking for six or seven hundred thousand dollars. Um, but that's the scenario that we're in.
So when do we get our final? Like like, do we get a heads up like before town meeting?
Yeah, so there's a vote coming out. It was just announced last night and I didn't take it down, but there's a FinCon uh meeting vote. Um, I don't know if uh there's a public hearing on the budget. I. Thank you, Peter. So they'll have a FinCon meeting Monday that we're going to. The twenty third is the public hearing, so that's been posted for a couple of weeks. At that public hearing, that is the really. That's the kind of it. Now, FinCon can change anything until it sits down on the town meeting floor. And they have. There's been situations of of emergency situations where that's happened. Or the school committee notifies the FinCom of its or in the select board of its actions on town, which I don't anticipate, but that's happened once before.
Then, of course, the the townspeople could decide on their own.
The townspeople can actually pass an unbalanced budget.
Always the town's vote.
The always the town's vote and the 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 town has the right, the I remember Bill Gervais saying all the time, the only body that can actually pass an unbalanced budget is town meeting. Not a good idea, by the way. Because then your tax rate is a problem in order to establish your tax rate. But you still gotta find it somewhere, right? So.
But 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 and and I'm not trying to scare you either. The the FinCom's budget that it presents at town meeting is a suggestion. The only reason that it presents a budget is because we have to have something to vote on, or at least a starting point. It can always be amended by any citizen of the town at any at any time during that town meeting. So I'm not saying we should. I'll jump out of my soapbox here. I said for a long time that we go about our town budget the wrong way. We we tend to go in there and try and do the, everybody's happy, everybody's sad, instead of making hard decisions. And I think at some point, the town is gonna have to make hard decisions. And and that decision process needs to start while these budgets will be formed before it gets to town meeting. We shouldn't be getting to town meeting, you know, jumping up and amending things. We should make these hard decisions in these committees, in the, you know, the the boards, et cetera. And and come to the town with a really good financial fiscal plan going forward. And I I don't think we do that. So just out of curiosity, I know we have to close our books on June thirtieth. How does that affect the other town departments? They just they keep going?
No, everybody, everybody puts together a a kind of a closeout, if you will, and then it that actually goes.
Hard stop.
Right, it actually, so you project it to into into basically payments through Ju- June thirtieth that you actually don't carry out until two weeks later. Uh, yeah, so we, I mean, we actually, the the technical closings were allowed until June fifteenth, but everything has to be uh marked by June thirtieth. So or July fifteenth. So for example, uh, we project out forty thousand to the electrical bill. And that may come in at thirty six thousand. Then that money would become potentially money that goes back to the general fund as free cash. And we and we do our best to forecast what that number is gonna be, not knowing what the actual bills seem. Occasionally, that money will return back to the town in small increments, ten, twenty thousand dollars. I forward you the FinCon meeting as well for Monday night. So six uh the sixteenth, the sixteenth is the thing.
It's on the twenty third.
Twenty third is the public hearing.
Can we, looking forward possibly before the end of the year, have Train come in and do an update on the projects? Because I know a lot of the townspeople were curious over break about what was going on at the schools and things like that. So maybe we can get them in for an update prior to the end of the school year.
I'll I'll have both Train and Gail come in.
Okay. You want to mention the school meeting?
Yeah.
And then maybe we can put something out to the town as like a press release or something, because I know there was a lot of buzz about what's going on at the schools during vacation. There's all these holes and deliveries and everything else and I was assuming it was the carports, but I was just assuming myself.
They were.
Do we have any other questions on the the budget?
No.
Okay, seeing all the questions, we'll move on to other business. Does anyone have any other business?
I have one quick item I just wanted to bring up. Um, we were going to do a fee increase for free lunch services this year. Um, we're holding off on bringing it up forward at this point in time uh because we know that there's money that has been put into the state legislation um to possibly fund another year of free lunch and breakfast for for schools. So we don't want to move forward with a price increase until we kind of know where that sort of lands at this point. Um, however, if that doesn't land, we will be coming forward with a twenty five uh twenty five cent price increase on all the.
What was the cost now?
Right now, it's at three and three and a quarter, so. It's been two years since our last price increase. Uh, inflation's sort of best caught up with that.
When is that decision potentially going to come?
That could be pretty late. Um, it could be as late as the end of July, um, before we find out what the budget is.
Potentially before school year starts.
I definitely, I think we're gonna hear about it before it starts. So they seem to be moving a little quicker this year. Uh, so I'll tell you a little bit about when we're gonna be notified. Uh, so we definitely, you know, might have to call a meeting during the summer just to to get that pricing, make sure we're all set. But uh hopefully the money's in there and we can do another year. Uh, it's been extremely helpful. Uh, our participation rate has uh grown to uh over sixty percent in all of our schools. Um, pre-COVID, we were seeing uh anywhere from fifteen to twenty percent for schools. So um, people are eating, kids are kids are eating, they're getting food. Makes you better brains.
At the high school, it's become sort of a social opportunity too. They're coming in for breakfast and they're enjoying their friends and their company. It's really nice. For so long, they were so isolated and separate.
Yeah. It's also ni- nice that they don't have to think about.
Right.
Just come come in, they can get it. I don't have to worry about, do I have money in my account? Do I have money in my pocket? Uh, it it's it's a wonderful program. We really wanted it to continue. Uh, we were hoping for two more years. Uh, the feds decided not to fund it, state's moving forward, and then we're gonna see if we're gonna actually get get a year and then we'll we'll lobby again. So um, I know Maswell's pushing for it, and the SS, I mean, I see everybody's pushing for it, so.
Yeah, it's a great program.
Yeah.
Thanks, Matt.
Any other business?
No.
All right, seeing none. Uh, next up on the agenda is executive session. So I'm going to uh just announce that our next meeting is scheduled for May twenty sixth, back at our original usual spot, the Norton Middle School Library, right? Um, and currently, we're going to vote to go into executive session. The purpose is a discussion, uh, contract negotiations, the various unions not to return to. Uh, I would entertain a motion such. All those in favor?
We'll we'll call.
Sorry.
We'll call.
And I just talked to Nick about this. Uh, all those in favor, Mr. Schleiger?
Yes, Mr. Shee.
Yes.
This is Galloway.
Yes.
And this is Melissa, yes.
Okay. Thanks, everybody.